நாம் இந்த நாட்களிலே ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுத் கிருஷ்டுவின் இரண்டாம் வருகையும் ரோபோவும் என்கரதான தலைப்பிலே நாம் தேவன்றிய வார்த்திகளை தியாணிக்கபோறோம்.
In these days, we are going to meditate upon the title "The Second Coming of the Lord Jesus and Rugeve."
கத்திரிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாக்கட்டோம்.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
இந்த விதத்திலும் பகுதிலாவை அடியேனி தேவசமகத்திலும் அடியேனி பிடிப்பாட்டினான பரிசுத்தவாங்கள் உண்பாகும். தேவன் நிற்தினவினால் நான் தேவனை மெண்டியோட்டுது விகிளேன்.
And I praise God that I am worthy to stand before the saints of God and those who have trained me in this way and I give thanks unto the Lord.
நாம் இந்த நாட்களிலே ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுத் கிருஷ்டுவின் இரண்டாம் வருகையும் ரோபோவும் என்கரதான தலைப்பிலே நாம் தேவன்றிய வார்த்திகளை தியாணிக்கபோறோம்.
In these days, we are going to meditate upon the title "The Second Coming of the Lord Jesus and Rugeve."
ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுத் கிருஷ்டுவின் இரண்டாம் வருகை என்று சொல்லும்போது அது மூன்று கட்டமாக பிரித்து குறப்பட்ட கரார.
When you speak about the Lord, the coming of the Lord Jesus, it has been divided into three parts.
முதலாவதாக ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகை.
First of all, the secret advent of the Lord Jesus Christ.
இரண்டாவதாக உபத்திரவகாளத்திற்றத்துச் சாட்சிகளை சேர்க்கும்படியாக அவர் மத்தியாகயத்திலே வெளிப்படுவது.
Secondly, the martyrs of the tribulation period that he will be appearing in the mid-heaven.
மூன்றாவதாக அவர் அந்திக்கிருஷ்டுவின் ஞாயண்டிருக்கும்படியாக பகிரங்கமாக ஒளிவ மலையின்மேல் இந்த பூமியிலே ஜெயங்கண்ட பரிசுத்தவாங்களோடு வெளிப்படுவது.
Thirdly, as the public advent, the Lord Jesus will be appearing at the Mount on leaves to judge the Antichrist with all the overcoming saints of God.
முதல் இரண்டு வருகையும் மத்தியாகயத்திலே அவர் வெளிப்படுகிறார்.
The first two coming that it will be appearing in the mid-heaven.
கடைசியாக அவர் வருகுதான வருகையானது பூமியிலே ஜெயங்கண்ட பரிசுத்தவாங்களோடு அவர் யுத்தத்துக்காக இறங்கிவருகிறார்.
And the last appearing of the Lord Jesus will be on the Mount on leaves and with all the overcoming saints to make the war with Antichrist.
ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகை யாருக்காக?
For whom the secret advent of the Lord Jesus is.
முதலாவது கேள்வி ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகை யாருக்காக?
The first question is for whom the second coming of the Lord Jesus or the secret advent of the Lord Jesus?
நாம் வேதவாக்கியங்களை ஆறாயந்து பார்க்கிற வேளையில் ஜெயங்கண்ட சவைக்காக மனவாட்டி சவைக்காக மாத்துரமே அவர் வெளிப்படுகிறார்.
Where we unleash the word of God that the purpose of the secret advent of the Lord Jesus is to gather the overcoming saints of God or to gather the bridal church.
இல்லா கிருஷ்டவர்களுக்குமாக அவர் வெளிப்படுகிறது இல்லை?
He will not be appearing for all the Christians.
இன்றைக்கு முழு உலகத்திலும் கோடிக்கணக்கான கிருஷ்டவர்கள் ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகைக்காக காத்திருக்கிறார்கள்.
Today in the world, crores and crores of Christians, they are all waiting for the secret advent of the Lord Jesus Christ.
லட்சக்கணக்கான பிரசங்கிமார்கள் ஒவ்வொரு நாளும் ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகையைக் குறித்து பிரசங்கித்து வருகிறார்கள்.
Lacks of preachers each and every day, they speak about the preach about the secret advent of the Lord Jesus.
ஆனால் ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகை என்று சொல்லுவது ஜெயங்கண்ட பரிசுத்தவாங்களுக்கு அதாவது மனவாட்டி சவைக்கு மாத்துரமே உரியதாக இருக்கிறது.
But the secret advent of the Lord Jesus belongs to the overcoming saints of God, all for the bridal church of God alone.
ஆனால் இன்றைக்கு அனேக ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகையில் அவர் இரக்கமுள்ளவராயிருக்குறபடினால் இல்லாரும் எடுத்துக்கொள்ளப்படலாம் என்று பிரசங்கித்து சந்தங்களை கிட்டுத்தொருகிறார்கள்.
But today, many preachers do say that the Lord is a gracious God, compassionate God, so when he comes in the secret advent that he will be gathering all the Christians together, they preach in such a way and they deceive the people in such a way.
ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகை யாருக்குரியதென்பதைக் குறித்து ஏசு இந்த பூமியிலுள்ளவோதே சொல்லிருக்கிறார்.
Where the Lord Jesus Christ was in the world, it said that he said for whom the secret advent of the Lord Jesus will be.
லுக்கா 17 மதிகாரம் கடைசி நாங்கு வசனங்களை நான் வாசிக்கும்போது படுக்கையிலே படுத்துருக்கிற இரண்டு வேரில் ஒருவன் எடுத்துக்கொள்ளப்படுவான் ஒருவன் கைவிடப்படுவான்.
In Luke seventeen chapter, the last four verses we read, the two will be lying on the bird and one will be taken up and the other will be forsaken.
வயலில் இருக்கிற இரண்டு வேரில் ஒருவன் எடுத்துக்கொள்ளப்படுவான் ஒருவன் கைவிடப்படுவான்.
Two men shall be in the field and one will be taken up and the other will be forsaken.
இப்படியாக ஏசு சொல்லுவதை வைத்து நான் விளங்கிக்கொள்வது ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகையில் இல்லாரும் எடுத்துக்கொள்ளப்பட முடியாதென்று ஏசுவே சொல்லிருக்கிறார்.
From this that we can understand that the Lord Jesus Christ, he himself had said that all the people will not be taken up in the secret advent of the Lord Jesus.
ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகை மனவாட்டி சவைக்கு மாத்துரமே உரியதாக இருக்கிறார்.
The secret coming of the Lord Jesus belongs to only to the bridal church of God.
அந்த மனவாட்டி யா?
Who is that bride?
அதை நாம் பின்பு தியாணிப்போம்.
And later on, we will meditate upon it.
இரண்டாவதாக அவர் உபத்திரவகாளத்திற்றத்துச் சாட்சிகளை சேர்க்கும்படியாக வெளிப்படுகிறார்.
Secondly, he appears to gather the martyrs of the tribulation period.
இந்த உபத்திரவகாளத்திற்றத்துச் சாட்சிகள் யார்? அவர்களை உபத்திரோ படுத்தி ரத்தசாட்சிகளாய் மறிக்கவீத்த அந்த வல்லமை அந்த நபர் யா?
Then who are the martyrs who died in the period of the tribulation period and who died as a martyr or who gave them the tribules so that they should die in the tribulation and who is that person?
அதைத்தான் இப்பொழுது நாம் முதலாவது தியாணிக்கபோறோம்.
And these are the things that we are going to meditate first.
இந்த மூன்று அனுபவங்களையும் பத்புத்திவிலே காணப்பட்டதான யோவானுக்கு ஆண்டவர் தருசனத்திலே வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
All these three incidents had been revealed unto the John, Apostle John, in the island of Patmos.
ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகையைக் குறித்து வெளிப்படுத்துகிறார்.
And about the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, it was revealed.
அவர் யாருக்காக ரகச்சியமாய் வெளிப்படப்போறாரோ அந்த மனவாட்டி யாரென்பதையும் யோவானுக்கு ஆண்டவர் வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொடுத்தார்.
For whom the Lord Jesus will be appearing secretly and who will be the bride, the Lord Jesus revealed it to John the Apostle.
இரண்டாவதாக உபத்திரவகாளத்திற்றத்துச் சாட்சிகளை சேர்க்கவருகிறான இரண்டாவது அனுபவத்தியும் அவர் யோவானுக்கு காண்பித்துக்கொடுக்கிறார்.
Secondly, the second experience of gathering the tribulation period martyrs, that it also revealed to John the Apostle.
அந்த உபத்திராளமும் எப்படி இருக்குமின்பது மொத்த வேளத்திலும் இல்லா திர்க்கதர்சிகளைப் பார்க்கும் யோவான் அப்போஸ்டரன் ஒருவருக்கு மாத்துரமே மிகவம் தெளிவாக ஆவியான வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
How the period of the tribulation will be, even though it was revealed to many of the prophets from all the prophets of the Bible, but it was very clearly revealed to John the Apostle.
மூன்றாவதாக இரண்டாம் வருகையின் மூன்றாளம் சமாயிய ஜெயங்கண்ட சவையோடு ஒளிவ மலையிலே அவருந்த பூமிக்கை இறங்கிவருவது எதற்காக என்பதையும் யோவானுக்கு வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
Thirdly, what is the purpose that the Lord Jesus will be appearing on the third coming that it will be upon the Mount on leaves and it is for the overcoming saints of God that it is also revealed to John the Apostle.
அவருடிய மனவாட்டி யார் அவருடிய ரகச்சிய வருகை யாருக்காக என்பதை நாம் தியாணிப்பதுக்கு உண்பாக உபத்திரவகாளத்துச் சாட்சிகள் யார் அவர்களை உபத்திரோ படுத்துவதியா?
Before we meditate, who will be the secret, who will be the bride, the church of God, but before that, let us meditate who will be the martyrs during the period of tribulation?
வெளிப்படுத்தின விசேசம் 13 மதிகாரம் முதலாம் வசனத்தியும் 11 மதிகாரத்தியும் வசிப்போம்.
Revelation thirteen chapter, the first verse and also the thirteenth verse.
பின்பு நான் சரி, eleventh verse.
பின்பு நான் களத்கரி மணலின் மேல் இன்றேன் அப்புறது சமுத்திரத்திலிருந்து ஒரு மிருகம் எழுந்திவரக்கண்டே அது கேடுதலைகளும், பத்து கொம்புகளும் இருந்தன அதின் கொம்புகளின் மேல் பத்து முடிகளும், அதின் தலைகளின் மேல் தூஷனமான நாமமும் இருந்தன பின்பு வேறு ஒரு மிருகம் பூமியிலிருந்து எழுந்தக்கண்டே அது ஒராட்டுகுட்டிக்கொப்பாக இரண்டு கொம்புகளையுடையதாயிருந்து வலுசர்பத்தைப்போல பேசினது.
And I stood upon the sand of the sea and saw a beast rise up out of the sea having seven heads and ten horns and upon his horns ten crowns and upon his head the name of blasphemy and I beheld another beast coming up out of the earth and he had two horns like a lamb and he spoke as a dragon.
கத்திரிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாக்கட்டோம்.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
ஏழு தலைகள் பத்து கொம்புள்ளதான ஒரு மிருகம் சமுத்திரத்திலிருந்து எளிப்பிவருவதாக யோவானுக்கு தருசனத்திலே காண்பிக்கப்பட்டது.
And it was shown to John the Apostle that the beast rises up out of the sea having seven heads and ten horns.
இதற்கு ஆவிக்குரிய அர்த்தம் இதற்கு என்ன விளக்கம் என்று யோவானுக்கு ஆவியானவர் வெளிப்படுத்தின விசேசம் 17 மதிகாரம் 9 பத்து வசனங்களிலே அந்த விளக்கத்தைக் கொடுக்கிறார்.
In Revelation seventeen chapter, ninth and tenth verses, the spirit of God gave him the revelation for this vision.
ஞானமுள்ள மனம் இதிலே விழங்கும் அந்த ஏழு தலைகளும், அந்த ஸ்திரி உட்காந்திருக்கிற ஏழு மலைகளும் அவைகள் ஏழு ராஜாக்களும் இவர்களில் ஐந்து பேர் விழுந்தார்கள் ஒருவன் இருக்கிறான் மற்றவன் இன்னும் வரவில்லை வரும்போது அவன் கொஞ்ச காலம் தரித்துருக்கவேண்டும்.
And here is the mind which has wisdom, there's seven heads or seven mountains on which the women sit and there are seven kings, five are fallen and one is and the other is not yet come and when he comes, he must continue short space.
இந்த ஏழு தலைகளுக்கு ஆவியானவர் கொடுக்கிற விளக்கம் அந்த ஏழு தலைகளும் ஏழு மலைகளா.
The seven heads that it has been given by the spiritual meaning at the seven mountains.
இன்றைக்கு உலகத்திலே ஏழு மலைகள் சுந்துருக்கக்கூடிய ஒரே பட்டனம் ரோம் பட்டனமா இருக்கிறது.
Today in the world, only one city which is surrounded up by seven mountains, it is the Rome city of Rome.
அந்த ஏழு மலைகளுக்கும் ஏழு ராஜாக்களாம் என்று ஒரு வியாக்கியநத்தை ஆவியானவர் கொடுக்கிறார்.
And the spirit of God gave another revelation, these seven heads are the other seven things.
அவர்களில் ஐந்து வேர் விளுந்து போனார்கள்.
And they are the seven kings and five are fallen.
ஒருவன் இருக்கிறான்
And one is.
இன்னொருத்தன் வரவேண்டோ.
And the other is yet to come.
கத்திரிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாக்கட்டோம்.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
இந்த விளுந்து போன ஐந்து வேர் யா?
Who were these five who had fallen down?
இது வரையிலும் உலகத்திலே ஆறு சாம்ராஜ்யங்கள் தோன்றி வில்செடைந்திருக்கிறது.
Till this day, about seven empires had come up in the world and they had fallen down.
நம்முடிய நாட்களில் ஆறு வேர் விளுந்து இருக்கிறார்கள்.
And even in our land also about six had fallen down.
ஆனால் யோவானுக்குத் ததருசனம் கொடுக்கப்பட்ட வேளையிலே ஐந்து வேர் விளுந்துருந்தார்கள்.
But when this vision was given to John the Apostle, five had fallen down.
முதலாவது எகித்த.
First of all, Egypt.
இரண்டாவது அசீரிய சாம்ராஜ்யம்.
Secondly, the empire called Asgard.
மூன்றாவது பாபிலோனிய சாம்ராஜ்யம்.
The Babylonian empire.
நாங்காவது மேதியா பெர்சியா சாம்ராஜ்யம்.
Fourthly, the Medo-Persia empire.
ஐந்தாவது கிரேக்க சாம்ராஜ்யம்.
Secondly, the Greek empire.
யோவான் இந்த தருசனத்தைப் பார்த்தபோது இந்த ஐந்து சாம்ராஜ்யங்கள் விளுந்து போயிருந்தது.
When John had seen the vision, these five empires had fallen down.
ஒருவன் இருக்கிறான்.
And one is left behind.
யார் இந்த ஒருவன்?
Who is this other person?
யோவான் இந்த தருசனத்தைப் பார்த்த வேளையிலே இந்த பூமியிலே காணப்பட்ட ஆறாவது சாம்ராஜ்யமாகிய ரோமஸ் சாம்ராஜ்யமே அந்த ஒருவன்.
When John saw this vision, the sixth empire is the Roman empire, that is the vision that he had seen.
அவனும் இப்பொழுது நம்முடிய நாட்களில் விளுந்து போய்விட்டான்.
Even now, he also in our days, it said that he had fallen down.
ஆண்டவர் சொன்னார் இன்னும் ஒருவன் வரவேண்டோ.
The Lord said, "What is yet to come?"
அது இனிமேல் எளும்போகுற ரோமஸ் சாம்ராஜ்யத்தை வெளிப்படுத்துகிறது.
It signifies the Roman empire which will be coming after this.
இதுதான் அந்த ஏழு தலைகளுக்கு விளக்கமா இருக்கிறது.
This is the explanation for the seven heads.
ஆவியானவர் வெளிப்படுத்தின விசேசம் 17 மதிகாரம் 11 மதிகாரத்திலே சொல்லும்போது மிருகம் எட்டாவது என்று சொல்லுகிறார்.
But in Revelation seventeen chapter, the spirit, the eleventh verse, the spirit of God said that it is the beast.
அந்த ஏழு கொம்புகளும் ஏழு சாம்ராஜ்யங்கள்.
And the seven hearts are the seven empires.
ஏழாவது சாம்ராஜ்யத்திலே எளும்போகுற இனிமேல் எளும்போகுற முழு உலகத்தையும் ஆளுகச் செய்யக்கூடிய அந்த சர்வாதியாரிதான் எட்டாவதாயிருக்கிறான் அவனே மிருகமாயிருக்கிறான்.
The emperor who is going to rule the whole world and he is the beast.
கத்திரிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாக்கட்டோம்.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
அவன்தான் அந்திக்கிருஷ்டுவாயிருக்கிறான்.
And he is Antichrist.
யோவான் அந்த மிருகம் சமுத்திரத்திலிருந்து எளிப்பிவருவதாக காண்கிறார்.
John had seen that the beast was rising up out of the sea.
அது எதை வெளிப்படுத்துகிறது?
What is the significance of it?
சமுத்திரம் சனசமுத்திரத்தை வெளிப்படுத்துகிறது.
And the sea signifies among the multitude of the people.
ஜனங்களின் மத்தியிலே இருந்து எளிப்பிவரக்கூடிய ஒரு மனிதனாக இந்த அந்திக்கிருஷ்டு இருப்பான் அவருடிய சுபாவம் மிருகத்தனமா இருக்குறபடினால் வேதம் அவனை மிருகமாக வர்ணிக்கிறது.
This antichrist will be coming out from the multitude of the human beings and his nature will be very cruel like an animal, so the word of Christ explains him as an antichrist.
17 மதிகாரத்திலே யோவான் காண்கிறதான மிருகம் எட்டாம் வசனத்திலே பாதாலத்திலிருந்து ஏறிவருவதாக யோவான் காண்கிறார்.
And John seventeen chapter eight, Revelation seventeen chapter eight, John saw that the beast was coming out of the bottomless speech.
இன்றைக்கு அனேகர் இந்த இரண்டு மிருகங்களும் வேறு வேறு என்று உபத்தியசித்து வருகிறார்கள்.
Today, many people do preach that these beasts are two different priests.
இந்த இரண்டு மிருகமும் ஒன்றே.
These two beasts are one and the same.
ஆவியானவர் யோவானுக்கு இரண்டு வித்தியாசமான கோனங்களிலே அதை வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொடுக்கிறார்.
And the spirit of God revealed this to John the Apostle in two different angles.
13 மதிகாரத்திலே சமுத்திரத்திலிருந்து எளிப்பிவருகிறது.
Thirteen chapter, it was rising out of the sea.
17 மதிகாரம் எட்டாம் வசனத்திலே பாதாலத்திலிருந்து ஏறிவருகிறது.
Seventeen chapter eight, where that it is coming out of the bottomless speech.
13 மதிகாரம் முதலாம் வசனை எதை வெளிப்படுத்துகிறது? அவன் மனிதர்கள் மத்தியிலே இருந்து எளிப்பிவரக்கூடிய ஒரு மனிதனாக இருப்பான்.
Thirteen chapter first verse revealed that he will be a man who will be coming out of the multitude of men.
பாதாலத்திலிருந்து ஏறி வருகிறது என்று எதைக் காட்டுகிறது?
And what is the significance that it will be coming out of the bottomless speech?
பாதாலத்திலே விளுந்து போன ஆவிகள் காணப்படுகிறது. அந்த ஆவிகள் அவனை வலிநடத்தக்கூடியதாக தூண்டக்கூடியதாக காணப்படுகிற.
And the followers are dwelling in the bottomless speech and these words will be able to lead this man.
இந்த தருசனம் யோவானுக்கு எப்படி கொடுக்கப்படுகிறது?
How this vision was given to John.
வெளிப்படுத்தின விசேசம் 12 மதிகாரத்திலே ஏசுத் கிருஷ்டுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகையைக் குறித்துதான தருசனம் அவருக்கு கொடுக்கப்பட்டது.
In Revelation twelve chapter about the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, the vision was given to him there.
ரகச்சிய வருகையிலே ஜெயங்கண்ட சவை எடுத்துக்கொள்ளப்பட்ட விர்ப்பாடு வானத்திலே காணப்பட்ட வலுசர்ப்பம் பூமியிலே விளத்தல்லப்பட்டது.
And in the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, after the overcoming saint, the bride, the church, after it has been taken up, the dragon which was in the heaven, it came down.
பூமியிலே விளுந்துதான இந்த வலுசர்ப்பம்தான் இந்த மிருகத்திற்கு யோவான் கண்ட 13 மதிகாரம் முதலாம் வசனத்திலே காணப்படுகிற அந்திக்கிருஷ்டு என்கர மிருகத்துக்கு அதிகாரத்தியும் வல்லமையும் கொடுத்தாக 13 மதிகாரத்திலே நாம் படிக்கிறோம்.
The dragon which had fallen down, it only gave the power to that case, it was mentioned in the thirteen chapter first verse.
கத்திரிய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாக்கட்டோம்.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
இப்படியாக ஆண்டவராகிய ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகைக்கு பிரிப்பாடு இந்த உலகத்திலே அந்திக்கிருஷ்டுவின் ஆட்சி எப்படி நடைவரும் என்பதைத்தான் இந்த 13 மதிகாரத்திலே யோவானுக்கு ஆவியானவர் வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொடுத்தார்.
The spirit of God revealed to John the Apostle how the ruling of the Antichrist will be after the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, it was revealed in the thirteen chapter.
அகவே இது ஏசுவின் ரகச்சிய வருகைக்கு பிரிப்பாடு இந்த பூமியிலே சம்பவிக்கக்கூடிய சம்பவங்களை இந்த அதிகாரம் வெளிப்படுத்துகிறது.
So all the incidents which will be happening after the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, it is revealed in this chapter.
இந்த அதிகாரத்திலே இரண்டு மிருகங்களை நாம் பார்க்கோம்.
In this chapter, we read about two beasts.
முதலாம் மிருகத்தைக் குறித்து நாம் சுருக்கமாய் தியாணித்தோம்.
About the first beast that we had meditated shortly.
இரண்டாவதாக 11 மதிகாரத்திலே ஒரு ஆட்டுகுட்டிக்கொப்பான மிருகத்தைக் குறித்து நாம் படிக்கிறோம்.
Secondly, in the eleventh verse that we read about the beast which was like a lamb.
... Kattaraya parshutthu namathukku mayum undaagattam.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Indha irundha mirugamayya kallathirukka tharsi, mundina mirugamayya andhikristiyan gradhana, andha sarvadiyari ki tanipattam manidhanukku oru sorubham seyyamadiyaga bhoomiyin kudigalukku, oru kurikkeppatta eyarialul la janangalukkala, motta bhoomiyin kudigalukku, katleitadha agana parukaro.
Here we read that the second beast that it has made a camouflage all the people of the world, not only to a particular group of people, that they should make an image for the beast which was mentioned in the first verse.
Sorubham yengradhana, Tamililla eludappattadhanapadathukku, greek bahasaile icon yendralupattarakaradhu.
And in Greek language it has been interpreted for the word image as icon.
Icon yengradhana vaartaki, angelatle moonru mukyamana arthangalai painbadutteerukkaradhal.
For the Greek word icon in English they have used three different words.
Mudalaavudhartham resemblance.
And first, first meaning is the resemblance.
Irundhaavudhu representation.
Secondly, the representation.
Moonraavudhu copy.
Thirdly, the copy.
Mudalaavudhartham resemblance.
First one is the resemblance.
Adhaavudhu manidhan andhikristuor manidhan, avandi adheeru rubathile resemblance yendru sonnal, thotratle otrumay.
First of all, the antique case will be, will be a man, and the resemblance mean the image it will be the same.
Inraki mahatma gandhiyakurithu namkeliyappadukkaradhu, avar marithu vittar, anal avar dey silayanadhu, mulu olagathilum kaanappadukaradhu, velinadugalilum avar dey silay kaanappadukaradhu.
We heard about Mahatma Gandhi and he died, but even though his statue is in the, in India and all over the world also we can see it.
Adheeponru eswin ragasya varikki virpada, indha mulu olagathiyum aalukasiyakkudiya sarvadiyari, andhikristu roamle okkandhiruppan, avanoodiya adheeru rubathile seyyappattadhanas silayanadhu, bhoomilel la idangalileyum kaanappadav.
In the same way did the ruling of the antique case, the antique case will be sitting upon in the city of Rome, and all over the world the image of the antique case will be spread all over the parts of the world.
Nan marvadhim thirumbasolukare.
Again, I would like to repeat it.
Andhikristuor manidhanayirukkaraan, antiques is a man, avandhi subavam mirugathanviladai kaanappadukarabidi nal, aviyanavar yoavanukkavani mirugamaga kanvikarara.
His nature will be like the nature of an animal, so the spirit of God revealed it as the beast.
Avanoodiya aachile irundha mirugamayya kallathirukka tharsi, motta olagathill la janangalukku, oru katleidukaradhu.
In his, in his kingdom, the second beast, the false prophet, that it makes a camouflage all the people all over the world.
Andha katleeyenavindru sonnal, andhikristundi adheeru rubathile kaanappadakkudiya, oru silayai ellorum seyyavendu.
What was the command? It is the command that the second beast had ordered is that, according to the image of the antique case, that the image should be spread over all over the world.
Bhoomiyin kudigal yaavatrukku, katleitadhinre eludappadukkarabidi nal, ovvar desathilum, ovvar maanilathilum, ovvar maavattathilum, andha silay kaanappadav.
As it has been given the command that to make the image in all the parts of the world, so in each and every city, in each and every country, in each and every state, in each and every district, the image will be spread over.
Inraki indha tuuthukudi patthanathile, ethniyo marithuppona talivudiyasilayay parukaro, uyiroodulla talivudukkum silay vekkeppadukkaradhu.
Today even Tutankhamun also we see the statue or image of many, many leaders who have died, and those were alive also.
Andhikristuudiy aachile uyiroodukkakkudiya andhikristyan grah manidhanukku, mulu olagathilum, ovvar maanilathilum, desathilum, indha silay kaanappadav.
But during the period of the antique case, this image will be seen in each and every city, in each and every village of the whole of the world.
Idha yoavan darshanathile kandukara.
And John saw it in his vision.
Adha mathramalai, adutha vasanathile eludappadukkaradhu, andha silayanadhu, pesakkudiyadaaga kaanappadav.
The next verse it is written that it had power to give the, the image can also speak.
Andha silayanadhu, pesakkudiyadaaga kaanappadav.
And the image can speak also.
Irundhaavudaga, andha sorubhatai, andha silayai, ellaa janangalum vanangavendu, yengradha sattam andhikristuudiy aachile yedrapadav.
Secondly, a law will be proceeding after the antique case, that everyone should worship that image of the beast.
Indha padimunra madhigaratthi ningal padithupparthaal, mirugathai vananginarkal yendru, padimunra madhigarathetta vasanathile padikaro, adhukki kielulla vasanangaliy, adhanti sorubhatayum vananginarkal.
In Revelation thirteen chapter eight was we read that they have worshipped the antique case, and in the below verse that we read that they have worshipped the image of the beast also.
Romeile oru manidhanaga, indha sarvadiyari andhikristu okkandhiruppan, avanoodiya adheeru rubathile seyyappattasilayanadhu, ellaa idangalilum kaanappadav, janangal adai vanangavendu yendru, yoavanukkavelipaditikodu kapattadhu.
The ruler of antique case that he would be seated in Rome, and the people of the Rome, they also will be worshiping the antique case, but all the people all over the world, they also should worship that image, that vision was given to John.
Andha sorubhattukku silathanmai kaliruppadaga, yoavanukkakanvikappadukaradhu.
And it was given to, it was given to John that there are some natures for the beast image.
Mudalaavudaga, oru pesakkudiyadaaga irukkaradhu.
First of all, it can speak.
Irundhaavudaga, thanai yaar vanangavillayo, avargale kandubidithu, avargale kolais seyyakkudiyadaaga irukkaradhu.
Secondly, not only that all the people should worship it, but if anyone is not worshiping the image, that it can find out the man, and it may even kill that person.
Agave, inraki tuuthukudile ethniyo talivudiyasilay ninrugundaruppadu bole, pesamal, parkamal, nadakkamal, oree edathil, vaittha edathil, ninrugundaruppadu bole, indha silay nirkada.
So today in Tutankhamun city that we see many statues, where we kept it, it will be in the remaining the same place, it cannot speak, it cannot hear, it cannot, it cannot make any camouflage, but this beast image will not be like that.
Indha silay tuuthukudi janangalodhu, pesakkudiyadaaga kaanappadav.
This image will have the power to speak with the people of Tutankhamun.
Indha silay tuuthukudi janangal thanai vanangukarada, yendru kaanakkudiyadaaga kaanappadav.
This image will be able to find out the person of Tutankhamun whether they are worshiping it or not.
Vanangada navargal irukkakkudiya edathirukku, teedi vandhu, avargale chithravali panni, kolais seyyakkudiyadaaga, indha silay kaanappadav.
If anyone is not worshiping the image in Tutankhamun also, that this image will be able to find out the particular person, and it will be able to torture him, and it will be able to kill him.
Adutha padiyaga, andha silay ennusayukaradhu.
Nextly, what is the other work of the image?
Sirior perior aisurivangal tharithrur, yaavaram, birkkavum, wangavum, muddiyamal, tadukkakkudiyadaaga irukkaradhu.
And he can cause it all, both small, great, rich and poor, free and born to receive a mark, and it can protect anyone.
Sorubhatai yaar vanangavillayo.
They are the person who do not worship the image.
Avargal birkkavum muddiyamal, wangavum muddiyamal, yendaviyaavaramu banna muddiyamal, unavupparugale wangavum muddiyamal, tadukkakkudiyadaaga, indha sorubham kaanappadukaradhu.
That image will be able to make the obstacle that they cannot sell, or they cannot, they cannot, they cannot make the products.
Mathramalai, padineena vasanathile vasikkumbothu, andha mirugathukorum muttrayyum, lakthayyum, adhu manidhanudiyasariyathile, indha sorubhamdhan tharikkeppudiyadaaga irukkaradhu.
Not only that this image will be able to give the mark and the number of his name upon the, upon man.
Agave, oru maruthuvur seyyavendiya veelyai, andhikristuudiy aachile, indha sorubham seyyakkudiyadaaga irukkaradhu.
So the work of a doctor, this, in the, during the period of antique case, this image of the beast will be able to do the work of a doctor.
Oru maliyakkadiki pogaraveleyil, nam panambadukkamal, oru periyah margin marketlandor porli eduthukundu vandhal, velilulla security, adhi taduthu niruthukkaradhal.
And if you go to a shop and if you take any object, any product, any something, something from the shop, and if you're coming out, we are paying the money, the security people will be able to stop us.
Indha veelyetan, andha sorubham seyyukaradhu.
So this, this is the work the image or the beast will do.
Mirugathin muttrayay yaar tharithukkallavillayo, avargal birkkavum wangavum muddiyadha alavukku, avargale taduthu niruthakkudiyadaaga, indha sorubham kaanappadukaradhu.
Those who are not put on the mark of the beast, that they cannot sell, or they cannot buy, this image will be able to protect him.
Irvadhu varadangalukku unbaaga, tamukkam madharyam tamukkam maidhanathile, namudiyam mathile kaanappadudhanan, kanambodinana perushutthavan, pasak keevipal avargal, indha prasangathai panninana.
About twenty years back in Madharyam Tamukkam grounds, our beloved pastor who had passed away that, that he had, pastor keevipal that he has spoken this about this sermon.
Andha naankalile, nan oru hinduaga kaanappattain, rachikabadavavanaaga irundhe.
At the time I was a Hindu, I was an atheist person.
Indha vaartegale kettu, nan anrakiyanaan, nanbarlooruseyundu pariyasamaninane.
When he was speaking about these words that I was along with my friends, I was mocking a team.
Eppudi oru silay irundhadhathu vittu asayam.
How an image or statue can move from its own place?
Silay pesuma?
Will a statue speak?
Silay parkuma?
With the image will be able to see it.
Silay nadakkuma?
Will an image walk?
Silay oru manidhanay chithravali panni kolais seyyuma?
Will an image have the power to, to torture a man, will be able to, will be, will it be able to kill the man?
Oru manidhanudiyasariyathile indha silayanadhu, muttrayay tharikkeppudiyma?
Can a mark can be made with the, with the help of the power of the beast?
Anraki collegele padithukundradhaana, engalukku, enne ponnradhaana, nanbarukkukku, idhu oru pariyasamaga kaanappadukaradhu.
On the day, we, the people that are the friends that we are studying the call, it was a mockery.
Priyamanaaralai, irvadhu varadangalukku unbaaga, namudiyam perushutthavangalindha vaartiyay pessinaveleyil, anegar, nam pariyasamanirukka poodum.
Beloved people about twenty years back, when our own saints of God had spoken about these words, even many of us might have mocked it the words.
Anal, inraki, indha pesakkudiya, nadakkudiya, kolais seyyakkudiya, thanmai uladhanan, indha silayay, vinyana olagam, kandubidithukkaradhu.
But today the scientific world has invented the image or image of the statue, which can walk, which can speak, which can kill.
Mudal kariam, andhikristundi adheeru rubathil, thotratle otrumioodu, oru silay, oru sorubham seyyappattadhu.
The first one, the image was prepared in the resemblance of the antique case.
Idhu saathiyam dana?
Is it possible?
Indha kailvigal, anegavidiyulla thile kaanappadukkum.
And many people may have these questions in their minds.
Nede valadri pakkatle, mudalaavudhu ningal parkara padamadhanadhu, jappan desathile uladhanak collegele eduthadhanan, unmayana padamayirukkaradhu, inraki ulak collegele, eduthadhanan unmayana padamayirukkaradhu.
In my right hand side, that is a photo which was taken from a college in Japan, now it is also in Japan.
Indha jappanile, college nadathmudiaga, oru penney ningal parkarirukkal, andha penanadhu, pennalla, pennudiyadheeru rubathile seyyappattadhanan, sorubham, roboaga irukkaradhu.
In this photograph that you see a woman which is taking up the class, or which is giving the lectures to the people of that class, and the image, the woman that you see in the picture, it was not a woman, it was a robo which can take up the lectures and which can take up the class.
Robo yendral, oru yendura manidhanaga irukkara.
Robo is a machine, he is a man of machine.
Manidhanalai, manidhanay ponnru uruakkappattai yendura manidhan.
He is not a man, but a man who was made like a machine.
Inraki, jappanile, andha collegele, indha robovanadhu, pillagalku paadhan nadathukaradhu, atthanserukaradhu, andha pillagale valinadathakkudiyadaaga irukkaradhu.
Today, in Japan, this robot can make up the attendance for the students, and even can give the lectures for the students, it can guide the students.
Idhai undaakirana, andha inginiyare kurithu, avar idhi eppudi uruakkinar yendru, artikalai, nan padithaveleyil.
When I read the article, who had, who, or the person who had, the engineer who had prepared this robot when I got through it.
Avar ennusolikkaradhu sonnal, idhe ponnru uruvamulla, avar dey uravile, oru pen kaanappadukaral, andha pennudiyay urvatai, manathile vayithu, indha robovay, avar undaakirukkara.
That he had prepared, he had how to make this robot by keeping in mind the same image of a, of a relative woman that which he, which he had seen.
Inraki, jappan desathile, indha collegele ningal parkalaam, indha collegele paadhan nadathakkudiya, robovayum parkalaam, andha robovadiyay urvatrulla penneyum uyiroodu parkalaam.
In Japan, you can see this college, in the college, the robo also you can see, and this robo can take up the classes in the city, and also you can see a woman which resembles like that robo.
Kattaraya perushutthu namathukku mayum undaagattam.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Andhikristyan gradhana manidhanoodiya, thotratle otrumayulla, adheeru rubathile uladhanan, oru sorubhatai, nee seyyavendu.
An image which should be, which should have the resemblance of the antique case that you should make.
Idhu saathiyam dana, yendru vedavakhyangalai, kailvigattu, vinyana olagam.
The scientific world which had asked that question, is it possible to make such an image?
Sumar, thiruppaadhu varadangalukku unbaaga, devandiya vaartiyay pariyasamaninane, vinyana olagam.
About thirty years back, the scientific world which was mocking upon the words of God.
Navilak kandubidipukal vandapirpada, inraki adheer vinyana olagam, oru manidhanudiyadheeru rubathile uladhanan, oru sorubhatai, oru yendura manidhanay, undaakiruppadai, nam inge parkaro.
After thirty years, in the same image of a particular person, and a robo or a machine was prepared.
Yoavan kandadharshanam, niraveeramaa?
The vision which had, with John had said will it be fulfilled?
Aviyanavar yoavanukkakanpittabadi, mulu olagathiyum aalukasiyakkudiya, oru sarvadiyari, ellumbavana?
And ruler will be able to raise up who can rule the whole of the world.
Idhu saathiyam dana?
Is it possible now?
Vedavakhyangalai kaala kaalamaga kailvigattavargal, ethniyo, ulaganyaanigal kailvigattaragal.
Many years, many scientists of the world, they had asked questions about the word of God.
Vedavakhyam solukkaradhu ellaa, ulaganyaanathayum, paythiyam aapukkara, devanyaana.
And the word of God says that all the world, the wisdom will be made as a, as a man, and it is written in the word of God.
Paditparivillada yoavan apostle, sumar, endaayira varadangalukku unbaaga, batpu thivilay, kandukara, darshanathile kandukara, indha robovay.
Illicit John about two thousand years back in the land, island of Patmos, that he had seen this robo or this image.
Agave, nam kandukarainda mudalaavudhu padathle, mudal kariam niraveerikkaradhu, thotratle otrumay, urva otrumayulla, oree oru manidhanay ponnru, innoru robovay, undaakamudiyo.
So in the first picture we get seen a woman, and which can, which was very well resembled, and another person, and by which we can make a robo in the same image.
Adha mathramalai?
Not only that.
Andha robovanadhu, pesakkudiyadaaga kaanappadukaradhu.
That robo will be able to speak also.
Andha pillagalku, inraki manidhanukku badilaga, paadhan nadathakkudiya utthiyogathile, inraki jappanile, robokale vaitthukkaradhal.
Instead of appointing the teachers in the human being form, that now they had appointed robos, so that they can teach the students in the classes.
Mathramalai?
Not only that.
Oru periyah car factoryle, arvadhus sadavidam, tholilalarakalai vitthukannipivittu, avargal seyyavendiya veelyai, indha yendura manidhanalekondu, indha robokale kondu, avargal seyyavunduaruvadai, andha original padathai nam inge parkaro.
In a big car factory in Japan, that they had sent away about sixty persons of the people, and now the work which had been carried out by the sixty persons of the people, now it is being carried out by the robos.
Idhai kurithu, jappan arasanga adigari solukkara, engal desathile, tholilalarakal strike illai.
And government official in Japan had said that in all land, there is no strike of the labourers.
Bonus kaga, aris kaga, government odhu poradakkudiya, navargal poradadha alavukku, manidhanukkusamamaga, yendura manidhanakalai, nam gal uruakki varukaro.
Now we are preparing or we are making the robos which will not climb any aris or any borders, which will never strike, which will never strike any works, and we are making such robots here since.
Inraki, jappanile, mathramalai, palveer desangaliy, indha robokale, palveer veelyalku painbadutteerukkaradhal, adhanoodiya chartai, yendandhanadugaliy, ethni sadavidam, robokal, yendandhatolil, painbaduthaapadukaradhu yendru, chartai, vinyaniyal velitthu chartai nam inge parkaro.
Now we see a chart which has been revealed by the scientists, not only in Japan, in many different lands of the countries of the world, all over the world, that they are making many, many robo machines, which can, which can be substituted for other men.
Inraki, anegarukku veely illamal pogakkudiya sulai, begu, sikrathile varappogaradhu.
Today, many people without any job, that situation will be coming up very soon.
Agave, manidhanay seyyavendiyanadhu veelyai, manidhanudiyadheeru rubathile seyyappattadhanan, indha sorubham, indha robokale kondu, inraki jappan arasangam, seyyathukaradhu.
So today the work of a man that, the work of the man that can be, can be prepared by a robo, these robos are being prepared by the Japanese government.
Irundhaavudaga, mudalaavudaga, pesakkakadhu, urvatle otrumay, irundhaavudhu, pesakkudiyadhu, moonraavudhu, thanai vanangadaavargalai, teedichendru, kolais seyyakkudiyadhu.
First of all, the resemblance in the, in the nature or the resemblance in the character, and secondly, it can speak, and thirdly, if anyone is not worshiping the image, it will be able to kill that person.
Indha yendura manidhan, teedichendru, oru manidhanay thunburuthu ma, kolais seyyuma?
Will the robo will be able to find, will it be able to find out a person who has not worshipped the image, and also will he be able to kill that person?
Am priyamanaaralai, andha vaartayum niraveerivukaradhu.
Yeah, beloved people, even that words also have been fulfilled.
Romania desathile, sirai kaidigalai, indha robokale kondu, chithravali panni varukaradhal.
In the land of Romania, all the, many of the prisoners, they have been tortured by the help of the robos.
Sirai kaidigaladuthundu, unmayay veliyay konduvarumidiaga, policekaral adittu thunburuthuvadillai, andha veelyai, indha robokale vayithu, Romania desathile, inraki, nadapittu varukaradhal.
To bring out the truth from the prisoners, they are not beaten by any policeman of the government, today that they are being beaten up or they are being tortured by the robos, even today they are doing that work.
Agave, andhikristundi arasachile, eswin ragasya varikki virpada, indha sorubhatai, indha andhikristuadheeru rubathile uladhu, indha robovay, oru manidhan vanangavittal, avani teedi vandhu, andha robo chithravali seyyo.
So after the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, during the period of the antique case, if anyone is not worshiping the image of the beast, then this image will be able to follow that person, it will catch that person, and it will be able to kill that person also.
Padinaa vasanathile vasikkirum, sirior perior aisurivangal, yaavaram, thangal kaygalile, valazugayilavudhu, nettilavudhu, muttrayay perumbadiaga, indha sorubham seyyathadhu.
And sixteen was we read, he causes all, both small, great, rich, poor, free and born to receive a mark in the right hand or in the forehead.
Idhu saathiyam dana?
Is it possible now?
Indha kailvikana badilum kadiyathukkaradhu.
Even answer for this question also that we have received.
Velinadugalile, mukyamana operationskalai, doctorku badilaga, indha robokale kondu seyyathukaradhal.
In foreign countries, many important operations, it has been carried out not by the doctors, but by the robos.
Oru doctor seyyavendiya operationai, doctorai parkalum, migavum tharamayana muramayile, ellamayana muramayile, indha robokal seyyathukaradhu, adhanti unmayana padathai, oru robo, oru manidhanukku, operation seyyakarunmayana padathai, nam inge parkaro.
A real picture also that we have seen in the chart that, where a robo is functioning as a doctor, very cleverly and very clearly, very minutely, that it is doing the work of a doctor, that it is operating a particular person, that picture also is in here.
Andhikristundi arasachile, avandhi muttrayay tharikkaavavargalai, valazugayilavudhu, nettilavudhu, yaar muttrayay tharikkevillayo, avargale, idhu, kolais seyyakkudiyadaaga, chithravali pannakkudiyadaaga, kaanappadav.
The people who do not have the mark of the antique case, during the period of the antique case, in their forehead or in their right hand, this image that it is robo will be able to find out the person, and it will be able to kill that person.
Kalaisiaga, padinaa vasanathile avargus solupattadhu, ippudi yaar muttray tharikkevillayo, avargal yendaporliyum wangavum muddiyadhu, birkkavum muddiyadhu, ellaa marketliyum, idhu kaanappadav, indha robo, kaanappadav.
This seventeenth verse say that the person who do not have the mark of the beast, that he cannot, he cannot buy half, he cannot sell anything from the market, because in each and every market, these robos will be placed there.
Jappanile, indha robokale birkkakkudiyadhanan, oru periyah sandhay kaanappadukaradhu, angay eeraalamana robokale, palveer veely seyyakkudiya robokale vayithu, virpadi seyyathukaradhal, andha sandhayudiyay unmayana padathai, oruzvil padathai, nam inge parkaro.
In Japan, there is a robo market, indhu robo market, that you can buy any robos, which can make any product that we also see in this chart.
Indha robokalidhi veely enn?
What is the work of these robos?
Thottaveley seyyamadiyaga, robokale seyyathukaradhal.
And to do the gardening work, they had manufactured these robos.
Oru vittile veelykaran seyyakkudiya, veelykari seyyakkudiya veelyaliseyamadiyaga, robokale vayithukkaradhal, am, pen, irundhidamana robokalum irukkaradhu.
To do the household work in a, in a, in a fine of house also, that the man servant as the woman servant, that they had made the robos in the same image.
Kadegile, ippondu porli wangivittu, avargal thridivittu pogaradhal, illai, panambadututtu pogaradhal, enbadiyareyarendu, taduthu niruthakkudiya robokal, ippondu, sandhayale kaanappadukaradhu, marketle vandukaradhal.
Now it is told that they had given the robos in the market, so that if anyone is buying the product, or whether he is paying the money or not, to find out the robo, they had appointed these robos.
Kattaraya perushutthu namathukku mayum undaagattam.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Batpu thivilay kaanappattadhanan, yoavanukku, aviyanavar, eswin ragasya varikki virpada, indha olagathile, ennusambavikya?
What will happen after the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, and this incident had been revealed to John, who was in the island of Patmos?
Irundha mirugamayya kallathirukka tharsiyanadhu, mudala mirugamayya andhikristyan grah sarvadiyari ki, andha manidhanukku, avandhi adheeru rubathile uladhanan, oru silayay seyyamadiyaga sollo.
And the second beast will command all over the people, to all the people of the world, that they should make an image in the same resemblance of the antique case who will be in Rome.
Agave, ippondu, oru manidhanudiyadheeru rubathilla robokal, tyarikeppadukarabidi nal, ini edhirkalathile, andhikristuudiy aachhi varubbothu, eswin ragasya varikki virpada, avandhi adheeru rubathilla silay, seyyappadav.
Now it is told we have seen that the robos had been prepared in resemblance of, of, of the people who are alive, so in the period of the antique case, after the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, the images or the robos will be prepared according to the image of the beast or the antique case.
Kattaraya perushutthu namathukku mayum undaagattam.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Ini indha robokal, oru muttrayay tharipadaaga, nam parkaro, adha aandavar shittamanaal, adhu eppudi indha robokal, tharikkaradhu enbadi, nam naalayadhanathile nam sundigala.
Now we see that we read here that the mark, the mark will be prepared, the mark will be made by these robos, if it is the will of God, we will meditate upon it, sumaru.
Andhikristu roam nagarile, oru manidhanaga kaanappattalum, avandhi adheeru rubathilla silayanadhu, ovvar desathilum, ovvar maanilathilum, ovvar maavattathilum, janangalai kandkannikamudiyaaga, kaanappadav.
Even though the antique case will be in Rome and he will be there, but it will be, he will be able to make the images all over the world, which will be able to watch all the doings of the man.
Nam eerkanave sundithapadi, aandavaraa esukristvin ragasya varugailai, ellaa janangalum, eduthukkallapadukaradhu illai.
As we can see now already that all the people will not be taken up in the secret advent of the Lord Jesus.
Appadiyanaal, aandavaraa eswin ragasya varugailai, eduthukkallapadukaradhal, yaar?
If it is so, then who will be taken up in the secret advent of the Lord Jesus?
Appudi, andha varugailai, kayvadappattadhanangaliy, oru kootta janangal, indha andhikristuudiyam muttrayay tharikkaamal, jayamaduppargal.
And after the secret advent of the Lord Jesus, one group of people will be first second, and among the first second group also, one group of people that they will be denying to accept the mark of the beast.
Avargal, indha andhikristuudiyam muttrayay tharikkaamal, indha sorubhatay vanangavamal, adai jayithu, rathasachiyay marithu, nittiyathile, aggni kalanda kannaadi kadhalarige nirupadaaga, yoavanukku, devan kanvitthukodu.
And without accepting the mark, or without accepting all of his, all of, without worshiping the image of the beast, that they will be denying, and they will be standing near the sea of glass.
Vellipaduthu visesom, padineena madhigaram, irundha vasanam.
Revelation fifteen, chapter second verse.
Anjyam akkinikalandha kannaadi kadalkanja oru kadalayam, mirugathitkam, adhin sorubathitkam, adhin muttraykam, adhin naamathin lakthathitkam mullaagamal, jayamkondavargal, devasoramantalangalai pidithukondu, andha kannaadi kadhalarige nekkaradayam kandeen.
Kattaraya perushutthu namathukku mayum undaagattam.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Ingay, mirugathayum, adhin sorubhatayum, andha muttrayayum, tharikkaamal, jayangkondavargal, aggni kalanda kannaadi kadhalarige nirupadaaga, yoavanukku devan kanvikara.
Here, the Lord God has given the vision to John, that those who have not accepted the mark of the beast, or those who have not worshipped the image, that they had overcome the beast, and they are standing near the sea of glass.
Ivargaldaan, ubathrogalathin rathasachigal yendru alakappadukaradhal.
And they are called as the martyrs during the period of tribulation.
Ivargalai seyruthukkallamadiyaga thaan, mudal moonraavudhu ubathrovathin mudivile, aandavaraa esukristin, irundha varugail, irundhaavudhu amsamayya, irundhaavudhu kattamayya, mathi aagayathile, ivargalai seyrkha, esu varukara.
To gather the tribulation period of martyrs, that the Lord Jesus will be appearing in the second aspect of the Lord Jesus coming, that is the harbor that they will be, he will be gathering these martyrs.
Nam eerkanave sunne, indha moonru varugaiy kurithum, migavum thalivaga, yoavanukku kanvikappattadhu bole, vedathile very aardukkum kanvikappadavillai.
As I had already said to you that, as it was revealed to John the apostle about the three aspects of the second secret advent, about the coming of the Lord Jesus,
standing there
And the over the call in meal um over a post or a player name um yellow potter carade
upon each and every stone and each and the name of each and every apostle was written over it
and the model on the butchery call like under cut the yellow popper carade
and that wall was made of precious stones
now in the key man of our team the third year for the it or do not think of a
today I stop with the with this about the worthiness of the bride
they will try to see them after man is the way to call them girl
but you please keep it in your mind
yes, Chris, a man of a guy, a man of a tea, yeah
who will be the bride and lamb's wife
or very young, my name is in the negative I will be on a can be to go to it is done, I'll do kitty on the man of a guy, a man of a tea, and Cara
a great holy justice, the city of God was shown to John and the last step, this is the bride of God
however, the part the value is a very dumb, you're a man of a car, Cara
even he saw it, he saw a wall great and high
and the negative to make him a negative negative for so the negative very dumb, you're a man of a cannot put a carade
for the glorious city, for the holy Jerusalem, there was a high, great and mouth, great and high mountain
and the model on the 14th of a son, the vasipom, we live for the 21th, 14th
negative in the middle of the panier and the as the bar, a couple of them I may mail out to kitty on a rodeo panier and apostle, a panier and a name angle on the other than the
at the 18th of a son
at the model, but you're a call, a couple of them negative, tell me the parallel of the opponent, so the banana is the
in here, a very dumb, you're a man of a
here a wall great and high
and the model on the panier and the as the bar, a couple of them in the in the undercarade
this wall was built upon 12 foundation stones
over the call in meal um apostle, a player name um player, a little potter carade
upon each and every stone, the name of the apostle was written over it
and the model on the butchery call like under cut the yellow popper carade
and that wall was made of Jasper
but the law, the in the very dumb, you're a man of a if they believe for the carade
first of all, what is the significance of a wall great and high
yes, I did the lesson, but the gum 60, the negative arm, 18th of a son, the vasipom, both model, in the soul, the Richard, in the avian, a little bit of Cara
the book of Isaiah, 16 chapter, the 18th was said, for the wall, the Lord Jesus revealed, the Spirit of God revealed it as the salvation
in a corner, you undies at the room, argue on the same, on the other leg, you don't get a problem when my deal, they are cheap, and when my son, they are too, they are
when my deal, they are cheap, in the soul, why
but thou shalt call thy walls a salvation
at the 26th, 21, we are going to ask you, we don't I said 26, first verse also, we did, the wall is the salvation very dumb, you're a man of a
a wall great and high
Richard, model, I am a carade
and the wall is the salvation is the wall
at the model on the very dumb, you're a man of a
nextly, the wall is great and high
Karissa, and the model on the butchery call like under cut the yellow popper carade
lastly, the wall was made of Jasper
at the model on the panier and the as the bar, a couple of them in the in the undercarade
nextly, the wall was standing upon 12 foundation stones
it is a little bit for the carade
and what is the significance of this
or man, the new Richard, on the panier and the and the as the bar, a couple of them in the apostle, a good asset in the mail now, Richard, a Richard, need to
and the 12 foundations stones signify that we should, that our salvation should be based upon the doctrine of the apostles
in the case, code, a car, a Christian, a car, a car, a car
today, close and close of people have been saved
but the law, the car, in the
first of all, what do we mean by salvation
Luca, 1, the negative arm, 77 of a son, the vasipom, both
verse chapter 77 verse
number, the day when we are a woman, a woman our own generation, a woman, a rich, a rich
power, a man, a but the mission of sin is the first salvation yeah, or man, the power, a man, a
why a person should attain the remission of sin
in the on the road, yes, Chris, it is but the law, the surkam, a little bit of the
now, I like to explain what the purpose of the Lord Jesus, first of all, he came into the world
I think, the day when man, the new daddy, I'm an either in the toilet, I wait, I'm an a little bit of the
and the Lord God made, made the first man in the Gotham Eden, and he gave the laws and commands to the first man
and the prama, the one, me, he, I'm a will do for the
when he transfers the command, the commandment of God, and when he had fallen down
Roman, 50, the vasipom, one man, the new village, in the in the modern world, the power, a man, a previous
in Romans 5 chapter, we read because of the falling away of one man, it drove the world, the death, the death had occurred to all the person, and the sin had occurred
if we do, we do, a man, the new do you get a body, a on the road, yes, a woman, a water, a car, a car, a car, a man, the new, a car, a in the earth, but the law, a man, a
so to lift up the fallen man, the Lord God, who was the former entity at the Spirit of God, and he came in the form of the human flesh, and he came to lift up the sinner, sinner from the world
the man, yeah, man, the name
why God became in the incarnation of man
in the world, three, the man, the yeah, he is a man, a man, a yeah, a man, a man, a yes, yeah, not a
in the trinity, there are three gods, and why the power, God, the Father, had not come, and why the Holy Spirit had not come, why the Son must come here
Colossians, 1, the vasipom, both several, the woman, several, the I will be on, I will be, in the urva, a pot, a
in Colossians, first chapter, we read that everything was created for him and by him
all, yeah, I will be on, all, the man, the new, all, I will be on, I will be, in the yes, in the, yes, in the, urva, a pot, a will do, a man, the new utter, a on the road, yes, a
so not only for the man, for all the creatures of the world, that he had taken the responsibility of saving the mankind from the sin
if we are, yes, in the earth, a
likewise, Jesus descended into the world
I will be on, the car, the
what is the purpose that he came down to the world
water, a car, a car, a water, a car, a man, the new, send it to the
the Lord God, who was in the form of a word, in the form of a word, also, he had met the man, he could have met the man
in the case, yes, water, a woman, a send it to the
today, also, the Lord Jesus is meeting us through his words
as well, will do, a man, the new water, a car, a send it to the
likely, he could have met the fallen man through his words alone
I will be on, a man, a
then why he became, he came in the form of a flesh
will do, a man, the new power, a do you get a body, a a a little bit, a master, a car, in the earth, a
to lift the fallen man, to lift together, it is essential that blameless blood should be shed in the world
Leviticus, 17, the lover, the word of God says so master, the car, a a power, a a car
and the life of a man is in the blood, only the blood can give the atonement for the sins of the people
I will be, a car, master, the car
so the blood, it is the life of a man, it is in the blood
I will be, a car, a car water, a car a car in the earth, man, the new do you get a body, a
so to shed the blood, the Lord God, the Lord, who was in the form of a word, but now he came into the world in the form of flesh and blood, to shed his blood alone
and the man, the new do you get a body, a the car a car a
to redeem that man, that he shed all of his blood, the lost blood also upon the cavalry
in the earth, power, a a man, the new car a car it or in the model, a on the road, yes, a the
because the Lord Jesus came down to the city of Tutsikarin, with a voice saying that the Lord Jesus, the power of the blood of the Lord Jesus, had the part to give forgiveness for the sins of the man
in the case, the world, the a
there were many incarnations in the world
but the man, the new power, a a yes, a a
but the part to give, forgive the sins of the man was given to Jesus alone
yeah, I will be on, a
why was it given to Jesus alone
a a do you get a body, a the car a car
the mankind, who had fallen to the sin, the Lord Jesus shed all of his blood, even the lost blood, the blood also to lifting him up
power, a a
who is bound by the sin
it's not a lot, a lot, a a a a
for so long here, that you are a slave to a particular type of sin
several, the a
I am a slave to a particular type of sicknesses
in the family, a a a a
in your family, are you being, have you been bound by the power of the medicines
they give modern world, a a a
today, whole of the world, what is the purpose, that they are under the curse, under, under the sickness
man, the new a a I'm a a
before the formation of the man, the angels had been formed, and they were fallen down because of the fallen angels, they had been changed as the devils
in the modern world, a a
now, the whole of the world is under the clutches of the devil or the wicked one
some, a a in the a a a in the a
now, he might have come to the presence of God in this time, but I don't have any peace, I don't have any rest here
it or your a on the road, yes, a a
because the blood of the Lord Jesus is being sprinkled among the priests to forgive our sins
and the car, a a
that blood has a life in it
and the car, a a
still, there is a life in the blood
the
and upon all the citizens of the Tutsikarin, this blood is being poured upon
and the gift, a a a sangar, a a
on the day, in the land of Egypt, wherever the blood of the Pascal Lamb was sprinkled upon, the destroyed could not enter the bereet
a a a a a
and if the literal blood can, this, can deliver this place from the, from the Egyptians
a on the road, yes, a and the a a
dear children of God, the holy blood of Jesus will not be able to save you
I will be, a a our a a a
so we who have come to the presence of God, now let us be convicted of our sin, and let us have the asked the forgiveness from the Lord
and the power, a a
and the forgiveness of sin, it is the first salvation
it or in the a a a a
because in this evening, if anyone has been bound by the sins, or bound by the sickness, who have come here
several, a
sometimes, for about ten long years, for a particular type of sin, that you might have a slave
a a
sometimes, for about eighteen long years, that you may be a slave for a particular type of sickness
oh, a a
only one thing, let us bring it in our minds
in the 18th, a a a a
who has bound us for the last ten or eighteen years
the man, the a a
the angel, who was formed with the full of beauty and full of strength, but even he too had fallen down
the man, the a
even the wisdom, which was given to the angel, that it has fallen down
I will be on, a a a
by keeping a fallen wisdom, that he is binding the children of God
will do, a a a a a
oh, dear child of God, even if the fallen angel is able to bound by it for the first, first ten or eighteen years
and the a a
and if the fallen angel had the part to make you up on the sick bed for the ten or eighteen years
it or yes, a a a a
because the blood of Jesus asks about you, that will, will my blood will not have the part to heal you
it or a a
because the Lord Jesus with the wounded body, that he is moving in a mist, that he is asking, asking to us
it's not a lot, a a
oh, my child, who is born by the asthma, for the last years
sugar, a a
oh, my child, who is born by the sugar
a
oh, my child, who was bound by the sickness
if we all, will do, a a
all these things have entered in your life because of the fallen angels
in the a
and if these fallen angels can bound you by having, giving you the sickness
a
will not, will not my wounds have the part to heal you
a
will not my blood have the part to forgive your sins
it or in the a
because many apostles, with the sickness, that we have come to this place
we all, a
let's all close our eyes
we are it or on the road, a a
because the holy blood of Jesus is sprinkled upon us
that's a
the blood can speak
in the robot, a
not only it is robot
we are a
even the blood of the Lord Jesus has the part to speak with you
I will be, a a a yes, a it or
the blood of Jesus, which can speak more good things than the blood of Abel, let it be sprinkled over all over the Tutsikarin
I'm a
and I plead to my father
and the a
and we, by the power of the fallen angels, we have the part to bind up the whole of the man
a on the road, yes, a and the a
oh, father, let me exalt the word that is the Lord Jesus, who came down to do the Bible, let me be exalted in his first day of this meeting
will do, a a
if the fallen angel can bound all of the worlds
man, the new
will not, that Jesus has the part to save the whole of the Tutsikarin
in the a
will not the power, wounds of Jesus, will not, will it not have the part to heal the people's sickness
it or on the road, a a
because the Lord asked a particular person, do you believe that I have the part to heal you
it or yes, a
because the wounds of Jesus speaks
you
you might have come with any kind of sicknesses many long years, you might have been bound by the sickness
on the road, a
but let us believe the power of the healing past of the wounds of Jesus
it or a
because God the Father is exalting the wounds of his son, Jesus
a
the whole is fitting, exalting the wounds of Jesus
and the gift, a a
on that day, the blood of the Pascal, which was sprinkled all over the land of Egypt, now the omnipotent power of the Lord, blood of the Lord Jesus, is being sprinkled upon all the people of Tutsikarin
a
beloved child of God you might have come with the sickness
you
and with the sickness, that you please enter into the blood of Jesus maybe you might have been bound by the past of
a
and the enemies might have done some enchantments against
a
but only one thing that you confess
a
and it took so long, this part has bound me
a
and this part has bound me so long
will do, a
and it is the power of the fallen angel only
a
but now, the person who is going to deliver me
yes, a
it is the power of the blood of Jesus
yes, a
and by the parts of the wounds of Jesus
and the
that blood is being sprinkled upon us now
a
and the high priest, that he entered into the most holy place with the blood on one hand, and with the incense altar on the other hand
it or
because in the presence of God
a
the Holy Spirit, that is the high priest
a
in one hand, with the blood of Jesus
in the
on the other hand, the supplication and the prayer, which will be made for you
a
to deliver you that the third person, the giant God
a
the Holy Spirit he has come to the whole Tutsikarin because he is moving in a mist
a
now we shall hear the deliverance
a
now we shall the forgiveness of sin, that is the first salvation
your
let our sins be forgiven
a
the spirit of God, who can deliver us from all the past of the devil, he has come in a mist
a
I'm closing his eyes with the faith, let us look upon
a
and he is touching us
a
and his blood is being shed upon us
you
not as you have come here
I'm a
in the name of Jesus, I say
a
not as you have come here
a
with the deliverance, we will be proceeding after this place
a
hey, because the person who has descended in the blood of Jesus
a
the person who has got into the third person, the giant God, that is the Holy Spirit
take it, a
and we, who, which is going to welcome, will it be the sickness
take it, a
will it be the sin, which is going to welcome
yes, a
will it be the blood of Jesus
yes, a
will it be the wounds of Jesus
a
to Thomas, the Lord Jesus says
a
and you put down your hands
a
Thomas, why do you doubt for me
a
you put your hands upon my heart
a
do you have any doubts
you
and you throw, put your hands upon the wounds of Jesus
a
you touch him
you
and the Lord Jesus, at the distance, where he can touch him
a
now we shall the deliverance
yes, a
he has overcome it
Hallelujah, hallelujah, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Praise the Lord, praise the Lord Kathar unenaisikkira Idho edechiaga Ningal indha kutthudirkavaramilla Kathar ungalay aasirvadikumadiyaage Kathar ungalay indha kutthudirkukundu vada Ungalaka yenaaka kalvarin, thande kadesu sutradhavareyim sindinava Tamri jeevanay thandu thandi anvay velipaditinaava Ipodundu gudda, avri kalvarin aasirvadangal yaavachim sudandritukullumbadiyaage Paava manniippeyim, sarirathil parivunavana sugathayim pettukullumbadiyaage Kathar kirubaiyai Tamri samuthurke unay kunduvadarakara Ni bayapadadhe Indike kathar unay thodapogara Devan de vallamay unay indike thodapogara Andhapaava vallamayindhu oru viddhalaiyayim, sarirathil oru parivunavana sugathayim Kathar unakka thara pogara Enandhal, ni avuruyasamuthurke vandurukara Andrikigooda Oru stree Devaaleethirikka kadandavandhirundhaal Jabaleethirikku mandu, aandurudiyavathigale kerkumbadiyai kadandavandhirundhaal Avale pisasinal kattappatturundhaal, balavina paduthukura oru avi avale kattirundhadaha naam vedathire vasikkira Oru kaalathil, yavalu vaalakaka nimurundhunadakakudiyavala idundhaal Anali poodudo, padinuttu varidangalaga Yavalu nimuramudiyada oru kuniaaga Pisas aanavan, andhabelavina paduthukura vallamaynala avale kattivayuthurundhaal Kathar devasus naamathikumaihimagdhaatup Andrik, andrikay aandurudiyasamuthukka kadandavanda avale, andhavar alaittha Avale aandavudithim mandu, yena koru sugavellumandu soli kettavilla Anathande samuthukka kadandavandhirundha, avale aandavar alaithu, yaavarkundadaaga, avale sugamaki Belavina paduthukura avilinda avale viddhalaiyaki, nimundhuthande kaygalaviyathia aandavare mahivapaduthatakadaaga Devane uyathatakadaaga, avalekka kathar appuppatanannavey seetha Andhandavara Yesu Chris, netum indakkim indakkim chivikkavaraai, indakkim avri matthile kadandavandhirukara Ni gudavri samuthukandurukara vandhinaal, kathar unay alakira Sagudriye, kathar unay alakira Sagudaranay, kathar unay alakira Unde kattugal yappuppatadaaga idundhaal, sari Indakkidi viddhalai pettukulla pogaraai Oruvele ayidu varidangalakanda kattugalukulakani kaanappatturukara Oruvele patthu varidangalagirukala, oruvele padinuttu varidangalagirukala, oruvele padinuttu varidangalagirukala Aandavaraal poodada kaari unjumilla, manushanalaal poodaadu devanalaal yella poodu Idho unay alakira Viswasaathodu guddadi, yelubbi katharadiki kadandaviruvayaaga Unde vedanikale ariva, unde irudhim nundu vendu poirukkadi avakankara Unay avar alakira Unde paava jeevithillundhu, ni yelubbu vayaaga Unde pinmaatamana jeevithillundhu, ni yelubbu vayaaga Avadithillundhu paava manniippey pettukullumbadiyai, avri parasuttha rathathaal kaluvapadupadiyai Oru teermaanathoodu guddadi yelubbu vayaaga Andhikanda kettagumaraan, buddhitelindhavanai Avan yelundhaan, naan parathikuvrodabaai paavam seetha Tagappanayum akku vrodabaaku naan paavam seetha Indira, andhande thande paavathunai unandhavanai, adakaka may manastavapadukravanai Avan yelundaboode, oru periyavu oru rachipai pettukundanai, oru viddhalai pettukundanai, oru aasirvadathai pettukundanai Adhey bole, ipoludigooda Namri ekuravigal kuchangale naunarumboode Andhavar Yesuve, ende paavangalela kummanniyamandu soli Avri parasuttha samugathil, naanamay thalti avri paavangale patchipudikku boode Abrahamin Kumaranaga, viswasaamula oru Abrahamin Kumaratthiaga, naan kaanappadu boode, kathar unay alakira Kathar unay alakira, kathar unay alakira Ni aandurudiyasamuthukavari nambini vandurukaraai Avravil viswasiyithi ni vandurukaraai, unde paavangalekaani may manastavathodu guddadi kaanappattukundarakaraai Idho, kathar dekara unay thodukara Kathar de vallamay unay sandikara Unde vyadjin vallamaygal yaavachim, thanmeel sundava Avadith talumbugala naan guravanaamandu soli na vasikkirame Adhey bole, oru parivunavana sugathay viddhalayam tarumbadiyai Idho aandavara Yesu Chris, namri matthile kadandavandhirukara Kathar de satham, idho unde kaadhirigetoni thukundurukare Kathar unay alakiraare, ni yelubbi varuvayaaga Unde aviswasaathivutti ni yelubbi varuvayaaga Unde ellapinmaachagalevutti ni yelubbu vayaaga Unde irudhitillan ni teermaanipayaga Idho devan de vallamay unay thottu, parivunavana sugathay tarumbadiyaga kadandavandhirukare Ni kathar thirundhu, oru sugathay, oru viddhalai, indha wayle vandhutkullovaaga Idho naan andha, paattai paadu boode, satchumunbaga paadina, andhandavara Yesu Chris vallamay kuruthu paadina Andhath paattai paadikundurukamboode, ni parivunavana, ni unay opukudupayaaga Kathar de vallamay unmeel irakkum, unde sarirathil oru parivunavana sugamundaga Ettenayavu varidangalaga, neenakashtathukulaga, vedanikulaga kaanappattukundarakara Kathar de vallamayaga, indakkunai viddhalai kumbadiyaga kadandavandhirukare Aaya viswasaathodu guddadi, ni avari nokkipaarpayaaga Unde irudhitillan yedhaavu paavangal, kurigal kuchangal unathapadumayana Avagale aandavara Yesu Chris vandhit, ni harikeseethu vuduvayaaga Avabikam yerekkumun daiyumilla, manathurukkumulla avur tagappanagirukara Oru bodhum avar unay porumbai thaluvadelli, avacholukara Endante varukaravari, naan oru bodhu porumbai thaluvadelli enditcholi Varuthappattu baaran sumukkaravargale, nigal allar jennidathil varungal, naan ungal kirekvarudalay taruvanendu sollukara Yavalu, ettiriyavidamana baaranalal nundu poib, vedanikodukkadandavandhirukara unay, kathar unay kisandikappogara Aaya, andhapaadapadukundurukamboode, naanamay opukuduthu, kathar thirundhu, oru kirubai, oru belathai, oru sugathai, naan pettukullovaaga Naam kettidu bole Ittanay varidangalaga, andhapisasim vallamay Andhabelavina paduthukura vallamay, andhapaavathin vallamay, namay kattivayuthirukka mudiyumeyana Namakaka jeevanay kudutha namri aandavara Yesu Chris vandhit Avagale ellavachil namay viddhriyakkukaradu, yavulavperiyavu satthiyamadu Avaral poodada oru kaariyumdo, viswasaathodu guddadi namri thaligale na uyathuvaaga Kathar unay viddhriyakkukara, oru parivunavana viddhriyake tarugara Ellapapaava kattugalundhu viddhriyake tarugara, ellavyadjin de vallamay viddhriyake tarugara Viswasiyipomaaga, 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 viswasiyipomaaga Amen, amen Amen, amen, amen Amen, amen, amen Hallelujah, hallelujah Satanaal ittanay varidangal, kattivayuthirukka mudiyumeyana Namri devanal, indha oru nodippoodil namay viddhriyakkupadiyada Viswasiyipomaaga, ende devanal koodada kaariyum unjumilla endha na viswasiyipomaaga Devan de vallamay enne ipodundu viddhalai akkumandu soli, viswasiyipomaaga Ni viswasiyatal devan de mahibayakkanvai Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Amen, amen Andhavara Yesu Chris Amen Shivine Lord, lord, lord Lord, 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 lord Lord, lord, lord Lord, lord Adhure Amen, amen, amen Andhure, andhure Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah Amen, amen, amen Amen Kathar de vallamay unay thottukaradu Kathar bighum, manathurukkumun daiyumulavaraai, aandurudiyasanditirukara Ipoldi ningirudhu kadandavogumbodho, devan de andhath thodudalai, ni unarugaram aganaka magalaga rupai Kathar unay kuruthu, oru periyav nookavaitirukara Ni oru vellichchamaiyirukkada Avar vellichchamaiyirukkaroole, niyunguda, ni padikir edamaiyirukkattu, velasikir edamagirukkattu, unde veedagirukkattu Ni englisindhalum, ni aandavurke vellichchamaiyirukkumadiyaai Aandurunay kuruthu, nookavaitirukara Aaya thande parasuttha rathathaal avar unay kalviyirukara Adu maathramalla, kathar sarirathil irukkandha vyadjin de vallamaygal Kathar nikupadurukara, devan unay koru sugathay thandurukara Kiravala hari, apthudamanakadukada, shamaaduva Hatthara manaari, thira, limakka thuruvikadukada, shiraman karabaudha Amen Kathar de kirubigal kirekangalakumudivilla Kathar dami namri dabudalaan kutthudiyam, kirubaiyai purupaduthundhavadi naam kathar isstothiri po Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Praise the Lord, 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 praise the Lord Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah Kathar dami, satthi te namri matthil pakundukundana tamri magane gudda Kathar balapaduthi, avar muramaga kathar unay aasirvadithavadi naal am kathar isstothiri po Praise the Lord, 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 praise the Lord Praise the Lord, 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 praise the Lord Avri ragasyavari kaaknaam aithamakappadupadiyaga Naam andhath pathanamaga manavatiyaga, naam kaanappada venumbaduka kathar besina Adi kuruthum thodandhu naam padikimboode, padipadayai, aandurudiyandhath satthiathukka naanamay opukudukkavargalaai Avri variyake aithapadukkavargalaai kaanappada Kathar unakku devasya pogaravadi naal am kathar isstothiri po Praise the Lord, 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 praise the Lord Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Thiriye devanikellu la tu diganamahibeyathu, naam avare isstothiri po Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord Kettadhaal satthiathumadi kathav, nagal chivikum kathav, avagale kirtubichay viddhalay kathav Aminadu rehda karesinaathkule kathav, aadu eemri daasana kundukathav Daalamaasathivalath kathav, velipititharumadiyai kathasithagundiga kathav Apuslaayavu varikavellipitana, andhara gasyala kathav, muna magan mulamai kathav, engalakavellipitithara Kathav isstothagundamari naashtothi kathav, nagalakathav, desathithamari chivikka kathav Desathithamari naalundugune kathav, melaathithinaalal kathav Nagal kathav, minpe pettukala, melaathithinaalal chivikathuvala kathav Melaathithinaalal kathav, nagal unduguna vanduvariyake aithapattukala kathav Nigal kathasithinaalal ratham kathav, aadu eepoyozalapattitanka Vellathakadu adhaver kirtubeshesabari naanandhi oristothirukkakathav Aminadu rehda karesinaathkule kathav, muna variyadisikramaayirukkavadi naal kathav Dukodiya kaalathile kathav, nagal ipripadhaal oru vellavitho orugali chivikka velibandhi Muna thasinduvalamai velipattinaal, satthiathkaandhi oristothi kathav Desathithamari kathav, nagal chivikka, variyakkaalapada oru degal thayidipattum Nigal kaalathiravallamay kallalupadukyo, Yesu Chris in all things yekupidav Anvana kathav, neenakirubaiyim dekarkangalaka nandhiyooda, namalumay isstothirikara andhavare Kathav, indha iraththi ninayathiligooda, neenangal, muri polilaangal deyavariyum, muri samuthal unduguti Muri rendham varigayi kuruthu, undugooda neenangal kunathithandhavadi naal, istothiram andhavare Irindham varigay, adu munde kattamahaayirukaradantu, naangal ragasyavariyil kaanappada venumbadhum Kathar neenangal kunathithandhavadi naal, istothiram andhavare Kayivadapattavargalaai, andhikrisvay sandikiravalaai hala, andhavare, andhara gasyavariyil, aandavare, namal sandikiravalaai kaanappada Adakkeethu oru jeevim seethimudiyago, kathar neenangal oru gudda, idhabadavadi naal, istothiram andhavare